I'd like to call to order this meeting of the school committee on November 22 at 6:04 PM. I'm just going to note that we do have one member participating remotely who was unable to be here in person this evening, Ms. Bolanesei. So for members, we have her over here on speakerphone, a little old fashioned tech tonight. So it does not appear that we have anyone here for public comment this evening, so we can move on to the superintendent, student rep, and chair remarks. Our student representatives apologize regretfully for not being able to join us again. Senior year is a busy one, and there is a Powder Puff football game tonight with the junior and senior women at the high school, and as also student council reps, they were attending that. I would like to offer congratulations to Ms. O'Connor and the cheerleading squad who participated in some postseason competition, and we've noted before that she has been unable to attend due to that, so congratulations to them on a great season.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Since our student reps are not here?
Yep.
I just want to say thank you. It was a class act to introduce them to town meeting.
Oh, thank you.
People really appreciated that, and I appreciated that they were there.
Yeah, I appreciated that they were happy to come.
I hope we keep that tradition going, or make it a tradition.
And they aren't here tonight to see it, but their name tags have come in as well, so now have...
I didn't get one for the first year I was here.
Well, you know.
Try a race marker, I believe is what it was.
Try not to read too much into it.
Didn't want to commit to it, apparently.
Just like in my house, kids always get things first. So we will be happy to welcome them back at our next meeting, and their input isn't, has been great when they've been able to be here and really valuable. Thanks for that, Mr. Nixon. Do any other of our committee members have any communications to report before I turn it over to Dr. Hackett? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Hackett.
We'll turn right back to you, Madam Chair, no, actually. So we have a special visitor this evening, guest, but who is also with us now. Man, I thought it was a good chance for you to meet her, and I'm going to let Lori do the introductions.
Yeah, so as I had said, Erin comes to us with clinical experience, has a social worker clinician, and a good amount of her career was spent in Cambridge, and she did two roles there as assistant principal and a social worker. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Yes. And that has allowed her to come here, and in just eight weeks' time, really hit the ground running. She's been in all the different buildings, meeting the many different people that are in her variety of departments that she oversees. And again, I can honestly say in a short time, her voice is heard, and she is making a statement at the table which is allowing us great hope for the work that's already been done and where we can go in the direction. So we welcome Erin.
Thank you, and I'm happy to be here. It's been an exciting eight weeks getting to get, you know, familiar with the schools. I've had the opportunity to meet with just about everyone who falls under my umbrella in terms of the different apartments and with, I believe, all the administrators at this point. So starting to get a sense of the community and a flavor. And one thing I really appreciated, as Lori mentioned, was the work that's already been done here. It was nice to come into a community that has already, you know, from what I can see, really appreciated the importance of social emotional learning and building those skills amongst students and adults in the community. So it's nice that there was already kind of a footing for that, and the work had begun, and I'm excited to continue it and to help it to grow and support our students and community at large. So very happy to be here.
Thank you, Erin. We're happy to welcome you, and as you mentioned, this committee and prior committees before it have spent a lot of time and goal work in social emotional learning, and we just want to let you know how much we continue to really value that position and role. And it's always exciting. It's sad to lose staff that we've had with us for a while through that process, but it's always exciting to get new people in who have ideas and experiences in different communities that can help us grow and evolve those programs as well. So welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon, you look like you've got something to say, too.
I have a puffball question. It's an important subject for many of our families in the district, and therefore we've made a lot of investments in this over the past few years. So for parents and families watching, do you want to just sort of take a moment, maybe describe your background and kind of what you bring to Winchester?
Yeah, so I'm a clinical social worker. I started out in a few different settings, a residential setting and a collaborative school before moving into the Cambridge Public Schools. So I was a school social worker, so I worked with students, you know, in small groups, consulted with students, did some lessons in the classroom around SEL. And from there, I became interested in administration, hoping to have more opportunity to expand the importance of social emotional learning and just overall mental health well-being. So I ended up for 12 years as an assistant principal in the Cambridge Public Schools, which I really enjoyed. You know, administration was a nice way to get to work with everybody and in a different way and make some systemic change in my building. And that then just evolved into my interest when these social emotional learning positions began to open up and schools began to have them. Peaked my interest because it is kind of always been the, you know, part of my work that I find most fulfilling and enjoy. So I spent a couple of years in a similar position in Westwood, and now I'm here. So I feel like I have a good grasp of what goes on in a school from my years as a school administrator, but I have that understanding of student wellness. And that's kind of what I also appreciate about this position, because not only is it mental health wellness, but it does expand across to physical wellness and wellness in other ways that the district has supported, like with the, you know, family consumer science, health, physical education, and then the, you know, array of counseling roles and social emotional coaching roles that we have in the district. So yeah, I just hope to continue to support that so that the students and families and educators are supported in the community over time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolanesei, I'm just going to check in with you every so often. If you do have something that you'd like to say, please just let us know, okay?
Hold on. Sounds like she's, hold on.
Are we good?
I'll just say welcome.
Thank you.
I'll just say, you know, welcome as well.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a great agenda, Erin, and I know, I'm sure you want to stay for the whole thing, but as I said to you, we just really wanted to get to meet you, get everyone to have a chance to meet you, have an opportunity to see who you are, but we would certainly, if you would like to leave, you are welcome to do it. In fact, you have to leave because I can't see the screen.
I'm blocking.
Right, so I apologize, but if you want to stay, I can't, we can't have it.
I was going to say, please go home.
But no, thank you very much. It's nice to meet all of you, and I look forward to working with you moving forward.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for stopping in this evening. As we then move on, we have several consent agenda items. If nobody has any questions or if anybody would like to move anything off the consent agenda, I'm happy to entertain that. Otherwise, I'm happy to take a motion to accept these items as presented.
Just a comment. I don't want to pull anything off, but we, I don't know that we ever got the revenue and expense breakdown.
We did not.
Okay.
Yep.
So just with respect to the minutes, we're basically kind of accepting the participation in the awards report, so it would be helpful to see the cost stuff maybe when we roll into budget season. That's all.
Yep, and I think Mr. Aria will be invited to finance subcommittee as he was last year to review that finance information as well. So happy to take a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We can take visual here. Ms. Bolanesei?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. It's unanimous, and we will move on to our report and update items. The first item on our report and update is the finance subcommittee update. You received a memo from Mr. Marin and Mr. Rowe regarding a new warrant procedure that will hopefully streamline our process and also our access for school committee members and make it more accessible to people as well to be able to see and review those. So they came to the finance subcommittee and suggested that on Monday of each week, the business office will prepare the warrant documents for the full school committee to review, and then on Wednesday of that week, there will be a warrant form created in DocuSign that will be sent to Mr. Rowe and Dr. Hackett to sign. And once that's completed, Mr. Hopcroft and I came to consensus on the finance subcommittee that if this committee feels that it's appropriate, that one of us will then, or both of us will be able to sign that through DocuSign as the finance subcommittee, as the school committee's designated signers, but everyone will have visibility to it.
I have a thought.
Yep.
So this is being put forward not as a policy but a procedure, which is fine.
Yes.
And it occurs to me, we didn't really, I think, dwell on this last time, but in pivoting to a digital model, one of the things I think I like about this is that unlike in the old days, there were physical warrants, we reviewed them, we signed them, we never saw them again.
Right.
We'd have to come back to the building. What I would hope would happen, and perhaps this needs to be articulated in a second paragraph, is if these are going to live on Google Drive somewhere, it's helpful for school committee members to be able to look backwards to see previous warrants, and they are public documents. So, you know, we could sort of maintain that for school committee members three, four, or five years from now, you know, if you really want to go back and look at it. So I, I'm in support of this. I think it's a great opportunity to kind of institutionalize a clear thoughtful way to kind of warehouse this stuff.
Yep.
So that we can get access to it, you know, the historical record if we'd like to.
In perpetuity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be the intent of this as well. Mr. Hopcroft, did you want to add any?
Yeah, I would just add that one of the things I found interesting from the meeting with Mr. Rowe was that this really is more of a transparency process. It's not an approval process because the warrants are all paid already, and it's really our ability to see them. And I'm not sure if this is how you stated it, Ms. Bergstrom, but only one person would actually sign them, but they can set it up so that it goes to both members of the finance committee, which happened to be Ms. Bergstrom and me right now, and then, you know, whoever signs it first, you know, attests to the fact that the committee has had access to the warrants for that week.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. But the, and what we're looking for from the committee is either, is consensus that this procedure is one that we think makes sense and we'd like to follow, and that consistent with setting up a finance subcommittee, that Mr. Hopcroft, your aye, would then be the designated signers and for as long as we remain finance subcommittee.
Ms. Bolanesei has a question?
Yes, Ms. Bolanesei.
Yes, I just had a quick question. So if we have comments, do we, or if we have comments or questions, do we just send them to Mr. Rowe, or would we send them to one of the signatories? Just wanted to clarify.
You, just like when in prior warrant procedures, you would direct those to Mr. Rowe in the business office.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Sure. We also talked with Mr. Rowe a little bit about moving forward. This is just a report of the subcommittee at this point, not pertaining to this memo, identifying more clearly for the committee, sort of moving forward, what our major cost centers are, and what we would typically expect to see to be able to articulate that because it's sometimes difficult for newer members of the committee to really always know what variances they're looking for or what they should be interested in reviewing about both our warrants and our budget moving forward. So we're going to hope to try to memorialize that a little bit further for future committees and to make it easier for new members when they come on board to be able to feel, since budget is one of our primary directives, to feel comfortable understanding the budget and reviewing it and knowing that, knowing what's in it. Does that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Which I should clarify that that's what I thought initially that we were doing with the warrants, was looking for variances and things. And so as I grew to understand that, it made sense to have another way of, for committee members who are relatively new to know when something is, you know, in regular course or something looks out of line.
Or when, as Ms. Bolanesei said, where we might raise questions and things we might raise questions about.
I would say in all my years on the school committee, only twice can I think of where a warrant review triggered like a retroactive change. So I wouldn't even call it a mistake, but monies were being spent a certain way that was really not in line with what the committee understood, and it was addressed. The other piece that comes to mind is there have been times when administration, years passed, would implement, let's say, a soft freeze on something because of budgetary pressure, and you would only pick that up in the warrant because there were, you know, there were expense items that just weren't being covered, where, you know, the monies aren't flowing. And that was some helpful, those were helpful things for the committee to understand because that triggered a conversation which probably should have been happening already, you know, in some way, right, in the public sphere. That's a hard conversation sometimes to have about the idea of a soft freeze. What is that really? But when that has had to happen in the past, it's because we had real budgetary pressures. So it is about transparency, and it gives a school committee an opportunity to maybe see something, ask a question, and for the committee to decide, is that something that, you know, rises to the level of the table discussion or is that just a one-on-one with Mr. Rowe?
So I think that's some of what we're hoping to try to clarify for people and sort of memorialize for future committees as well.
It's fine. I just would add one more thing, just to be clear. Peter and Andrew have been working closely with the town with both Mark Tugid and Stacy Ward. They know this process. They've kind of signed off on it. They're also very interested in starting to move to more digital. We pass a lot of paper. So actually Stacy and Andrew will be meeting, I believe, next week or so, a couple of weeks, just to kind of go back in Immunis because now we have an upgraded Immunis financial software package and just kind of looking at what are the, kind of what are the next things we should be thinking about implementing as a school system and as a town. So this is consistent with that direction, and I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that and the public knew that. We're not doing this independently.
I think moving to the digital age is good, and especially if we're going to keep bouncing your office around, so you don't have to carry as many file cabinets with you.
Right on wheels.
So we covered a lot of ground in finance subcommittee at our last meeting. So finance subcommittee moving forward is going to start to move into budget season and budget discussions, just to make the other committee members aware. Of course, subcommittee member, or subcommittee meetings are always public meetings, and you are welcome to attend those, even if you're not a member of the committee. We do, we do have one coming up in the first week in December, just to keep, keep you all in the loop and make sure everybody knows what's going on with that. And unless there are any other questions, I think we can move on to the policy subcommittee update.
Okay.
Should be Ms. Bolanesei and Mr. Brady.
Got your back. Ms. Bolanesei?
Yes.
Okay, we are at, we're at the policy subcommittee update. Did you want to take that?
Sure. If people can hear me, I will do it.
I can actually hear you maybe better than Zoom.
Amazingly.
Yeah.
If I'm there. Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay, let that be a lesson to me. So policy subcommittee had met as well last week, and we had also done quite a bit of stuff. We worked through some of the MASC, the Massachusetts Association for School Committee, policy manual updates, suggested updates, which were for Section D on fiscal management, policy KCD on public gifts to schools, JICA on dress code. And in addition to that, we followed up on policy EEAK, which is the Town of Winchester, it's a shared policy, I guess, with the Town of Winchester, on fuel-efficient vehicles that had already been passed by the select board last year. So for Section D on the fiscal management policies, we worked through all of the policies that the MASC had recommended, but we were trying to keep the spirit of the Winchester Public Schools Policy Manual for those policies that are specific to Winchester or referred specifically to the Town Charter. But we added new information and references from the MASC manual. Then we had sent those to the finance subcommittee and Mr. Rowe for their review, and I believe they had offered their approval of the language of Section D fiscal management policy.
That's correct.
Yes. Didn't want to, didn't want to jump ahead.
Nope, that's perfect.
Okay. And for policy EEAK, we just added a single line that had been brought to us last year and by the Energy Management Committee and which had been approved by the Select Board on October 21st last year. And that was specifically, "With all things being equal, the Town of Winchester shall preferentially purchase or procure electric vehicles, plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, or other highly efficient vehicles." But that was the only addition. And then for policy KCD, we just incorporated some edits from the MASC, and that was also the same for JICA. So with that, the policy subcommittee was just recommending that the school committee consider voting to incorporate these or for, or take a first review of these, but consider voting in the future to incorporate these policies from Section D fiscal management, EEAK, JICA, and KCD into the policy manual.
So essentially, Ms. Bolanesei, this is our first read of these amended policies, and then at our next meeting, we would be able to vote to accept them. Is that your anticipation?
Yes, that's correct.
And Mr. Brady, did you have anything to share or add to what Ms. Bolanesei said as the other committee member before we take questions?
I just want to thank Karen. She's very humble. She did a lot of the work on these and did some very diligent, detailed work, and it was really excellent. So I appreciated all the updates that she made, and I just would want to highlight the dress code policy. I think it really has the intended effect, and I think it's really important in supporting all our students that we have a dress code policy as it is stated. So I'm excited about that. I'm just emphasizing that.
It's been a work in progress for us for quite a few years now, so it is nice to see it evolve yet again. I agree. Mr. Nixon?
So I just want to say, I, unfortunately, I still don't have access to fiscal policy, Section D, or the public gifts to schools. So, but I was able to look at EEAK and the dress code. I mean, I agree with Seamus completely on the dress code piece.
It's weird.
The fuel-efficient vehicle policy is kind of a pretty vague thing that's been inserted, so it's kind of a harmless thing. We should probably change reference to the Board of Selectment to Select Board while we're at it.
Yep.
Just to tidy that up. Anyway, that's all. I just want to be sure I have the opportunity to see that.
Yeah, definitely. I don't know why you're not having access to it.
I was going to say, I'm not sure why.
This is in the materials folder, so I'll look at it.
And the link from the policy.
Right. But yes, that's, it'll be.
I know. I think that's weird.
Yeah.
Clearly, you're no longer a school committee member, and this is how we're telling you.
Sometimes Google decides which account you're under, and it's not always.
It tells them it's signed in as C. Nixon Winchester PS Tower. Weird.
We'll get it to you. If nothing else, hard copy. Mr. Hopcroft.
Not intentional, Ms. Nixon. So to make you feel better, Mr. Nixon, I also don't have access to those two documents.
Oh. All right, well, now it's starting to come out, isn't it?
Sounds like conspiracy.
I do have access to the others, so I think I'm in my school account here.
Yeah.
Either that or other files are.
We'll try again.
I will check them immediately after the meeting and get them to you, and this is a first reading, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, given that this is a first reading.
But I am very supportive of the other two. I would actually even go further on the fuel-efficient vehicle one, but I'm fine with going to where the select board is.
Since Mr. Hopcroft said that, look, it's tough when two public bodies are trying to work in lockstep. I feel like there could be much clearer, a clearer statement as opposed to what has been inserted in the fuel-efficient vehicles policy. You know, someone has even questioned, what does that mean, all things being equals? Things will never be equal. They're just different. So I think, you know, one can be a more sort of definitive, right, and aspirational, but I mean, it's fine.
Just a reminder, we have one van.
Right.
Yeah.
That we actually purchased.
We have a van.
We have contracts, but.
And historically, the gross vehicle weight actually exceeds the limit for the applicability of the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe with the battery in it, that might be true.
So if this committee is interested in that policy going further for us, I would suggest we could send it back to the, to the policy subcommittee and maybe have a conversation with Mr. Pruitt, our sustainability director for the town, and understand a little bit more of why the town has the language it does and whether they would be comfortable with us taking it, just making some changes to it.
With respect, if I were to participate in such a conversation, it would occur after January 7th, 2023. That's one.
With, also with much respect, even maybe more so. I feel like we have a lot going on right now.
Right.
And we do have one van.
Which is why I said if a committee wills it so, since several people brought it up.
I'm hoping to persuade the committee that.
No, I'm not, not trying to blow it up. I'm okay with it, but I just want to say I agree with what I think Mr. Hopcroft was trying to convey.
I think the language very specifically is for the town's ability to participate in the communities program. So the language for grant writing is pretty specific, and that's pretty specific language, because I think also some of the languages in our policy, which was from the Select Board policy, I don't think the Select Board has done anything with that actual policy.
No.
They just voted on that language very specifically to qualify for grant. So we are being supportive of. So we are being supportive of, of that effort.
Can I ask, just, because that's a really good point about the Green Communities. So are we doing this to be in alignment with the Select Board or are we doing this to be in alignment with Ken Pruitt's office?
The Select Board voted that language specifically.
As recommended by?
So, so I might suggest that we just have a conversation to make sure that, because there's Green Communities, but there's many other programs and I mean, so for this, I'm fine with it. I think it's, it's great, but, but also maybe, you know, I'm happy to touch base with someone on the policy.
Oh, so we could add it, we could ask Policy to maybe have that conversation with Ken after the first of the year.
And I don't mean to take a lot of time.
No, that's okay.
You know, is there anything else we should be doing to maximize your ability to get grants to move us forward on these issues?
Can I also just suggest the reason, if it's going back a few years ago, because the School Committee has mentioned it here is why it came to the school. In other words, the gesture was, the Select Board could have come up with a policy only for the general municipal side, but the purpose was, let's just do town and schools. Let's do it all together, even though we, like, for years have only had one van. That's it. But it was, it was appropriate, you know, from a gesture point of view.
It's getting to be a pretty green via now because it's going to be like a Fred Flintstone van pretty soon because the floorboards are rotting. So it'll just be pedal with the feet, so we should.
It's good to know. Renewable energy.
Sorry, that was uncalled for, but.
So, so does that sound acceptable, Mr. Hopcroft, that perhaps we?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because there's a bunch of things that'll be coming down the road.
Right.
I know we outsource our, our busing contracts, but eventually probably going to be wanting to require the outsourced providers, et cetera. So I, I just, I don't know what things, you know, are out there, but I would hate to be held back from, you know, because I know there's a lot of money flowing.
And I also think it's a good conversation too for Finance because I, to that point, and also Ms. Bullen essay reminded me through text that it was the Energy Management Committee that actually came forward requesting this language in the School Committee legislature. That many of the school systems in the area do contract with private contractors, their bus services. And how the, any money that comes from the feds or the state and what that flow through might look like and what the implications are for the infrastructure that would have to be in place for chargers, stations at privately held companies, really I think is a good topic for state legislative conversation because we can't independently probably do that by ourselves and truly, our bus company is, I don't want to say it this way, but it is a small enterprise. It wouldn't, you know, it's not, doesn't have the kind of capital to put out, you know, to purchase 10 or 15 electric buses right off the bat. So in just thinking about this a little bit more and that we've had some kind of conversations around this, but it is a conversation that's happening among business managers and super dens in the area. So we should probably, if we're interested, figure out where that's at and maybe add our voice to it and talk to our legislative delegation because there seems to be quite a bit of state funds available that we're all looking forward to seeing at some point.
Yeah. At the end of the day, we know there's going to be a transition in eight, nine years, you know, or give or take. And so just, we know it's coming, so.
So I, I know that sustainability is one of the goals this committee has identified also, so it seems like these items fall under our, our mission and our vision for a more sustainable school district as well. So it seems appropriate to me that we add to our future agenda items for both policy and finance to examine more ways that we as a district might have access to more funding and more sustainable policies moving forward.
Yeah, and as a last thought on that, the town hired a person to do that for us, basically. So we just need to communicate and.
Exactly. And, and this is, and Ms. Maffie's been working on this for a long time, as Karen points out, through Energy Management as well. So we have two great resources in this town to, to go to for some of that information too, and it'd be good to get some understanding around it.
Great, thank you.
So if, nobody has anything additional to add to that, this is a short meeting this evening. We're trying to keep it short before the holiday for everyone. We did have a couple of things we needed to, to move through and the consent agenda and the reporting are next. Thank you all for helping us do that. Our future meeting dates, I just wanted to talk to the committee about for a moment before we adjourn to executive session. We have scheduled December 6th and December 13th, which is two weeks in a row for School Committee in December. We do need two meetings in December because that will be getting us into budget season, so we do want to make sure we have two meetings in December scheduled. I wanted to clarify with the committee one last time, as Dr. Hackett and I looked at this, that the committee still does desire to have those in a row and that you wouldn't prefer to move one to the 21st. Oh, and, and given that December 6th, our meeting will be a School Committee workshop, again, to work further on our, as we had indicated that we were interested in doing, at least, at least part of that session. We will try to have a short meeting like this one at the beginning and then a workshop following that, to work towards that strategic vision as we've done in two sessions already. We wanted to make sure to keep that on your agendas. We know December's busy, but it felt important to this committee to continue the work on this strategic plan and that visioning and I don't want to let it get away from us too far.
So our regular business will come first, do you think?
Regular business will come first, followed by the workshop.
And I, I know I just mentioned this to you briefly at town meeting, so we have an Audit Advisory Committee meeting that's been scheduled on the 6th, I think, due to the availability of others and the auditor. And we actually, I don't think, had a quorum at the last session. So I just need to talk to Stacy.
Okay.
I, I need to see if people have some flexibility. If not, what would the timing be of that meeting? Because Peter and I could maybe go do that, you know, quickly. And we might even do it remotely and then I could jump back into the School Committee stuff. So I just need to talk to Stacy.
So then I guess then, how do people feel about the 13th? Is everybody, I just wanted to clarify before we, it got too far away from us, that two weeks in a row was still preferable to everyone than following, than doing the 6th and the 21st? Just opinions from the, everybody weigh in for me.
Just, just, you know, just thinking out loud, with the workshop on the 6th, we'll keep that agenda light, much like probably tonight, to the extent we can. The 13th might be a really good meeting for you to get a kind of a, a full overview of where the Finance Committee is with the budget development. And then I would also wonder, as I look at January, whether we do have a meeting scheduled for the 10th, whether we should just pencil in the 17th also? And then the 24th is our next scheduled meeting and then the budget vote by charter needs to happen by this committee on the 31st, which happens conveniently to be last Tuesday of the month. So I'm wondering whether or not it would make sense as a placeholder, just to, just to hold the 17th, just in case we need it.
So you're saying 10th, 17th, 24th, and what, I want to be sure I'm following you.
Every Tuesday except for the 3rd.
Every Tuesday in January.
Except for the 3rd. I don't anticipate that we would need it, but I think it might be good just to keep it on our calendars because that timeline just happens pretty quickly.
And I think earlier, this committee also had agreed that Tues, we would be holding Tuesdays for School Committee meetings when we needed to add them. We had agreed to that at the beginning of the year, so. I think it would just be making that more memorialized, so to speak, if we're adding the 17th to be held.
I'm not even, yeah.
And a heads up.
Maybe it's just as just enough, people could just kind of hold it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And not, not officially schedule it.
More of an anticipation than a.
So Ms. Bergdahl, was your question then on the 13th, whether that makes sense or to push it to the 20th?
My question was, right, was whether two weeks in a row, we had not scheduled one on the 20th because it was the last week before winter break and we felt there may be some obligations people might have around kids and families that week. But I just, like I said, it was two weeks in a row and I didn't want everybody to get into December and realize we had them scheduled two weeks in a row and then suddenly be surprised by that. So I'm just clarifying that that still works with everyone. I heard a yes from Mr. Brady, he prefers it that way.
He prefers which?
The 6th and the 13th.
6th and the 13th.
You'd rather not do the 20th?
Yeah, I think it's. From a budget, from our, from our office perspective, the 13th would be better because then we can give you a full overview where we are. And then that also gives you a little time before the break to independently ask questions. Finance Committee might want to meet again that week or that 20th to review any feedback that comes from the committee just on the initial overview. And then we come back in January and on the 10th, we hit you with a fairly good draft approaching a final recommendation.
So I, may I ask a question? So if there's an initial kind of high level presentation on Tuesday, December 13th, and you're welcoming School Committee feedback in the moment, or if it's, you know, one-on-one afterwards. Is there not, it seems to me the January 10th meeting could be a pretty key meeting for some further discussion and clarification.
Yep, yes.
So if the committee is then, let's say, taking a position on something or urging a priority of one thing over another, you know, is that, is that not happening too late for you on January 10th?
No, I don't think so.
I would also suggest that there may be a Finance Subcommittee meeting, most certainly, between the 13th and January 10th. And if members had questions or had something of what you're suggesting, Mr. Nixon, the Finance Subcommittee could also provide a venue for a discussion of that before the 10th.
Okay.
If that works for everyone.
Yeah, two back-to-back meetings in December is just to warm up for four in January, right?
We're going to give you a couple of weeks off and then just.
Spent all your hammies.
Yeah.
For me, the 6th is the harder date, but I, but, but, you know, it's important, so.
And are we saying?
And that is what we had scheduled. The 6th and the 13th are what were scheduled and we voted on.
Right.
Since we're just talking about it and because the 31st falls on the Tuesday, can we also agree on when our snow date would be, so we have to actually call one?
I thought we had that on the initial.
Did we say February 1st or 2nd? I thought we talked about it, I don't know if we picked it.
Yeah, we did talk about it.
I thought it was February 1st, but just the next night.
I thought it was the 2nd, but that's okay.
Okay.
It would just be good to be sure we've picked the date and we know what it is.
It's not in my calendar and Aaron was here when that all happened, so I know it's not, I know it, we didn't pick it.
We may have talked about it and not come to consensus on one.
I could do Wednesday, the 1st. I think the town manager would be happier if we did it on the 1st, if we needed to have the snow date. I mean, we could. I could also do the 2nd.
I can do either one.
The 1st would actually probably be better for me, but usually we look to a Thursday if we can't do.
2nd's better than me, but I, it's a snow date, I'm, my life's going to be crazy anyway if we've had a snow day on the 31st.
You said it's better for you on the 2nd?
It is, and I would.
2nd's also better for me.
So let's just pick that.
Yeah.
Have something on the 1st.
I would also suggest that if the 31st is a snow day, having a day between that might be the better way to go, because.
Yep.
I will note that puts it on Groundhog Day.
Right.
Is anyone celebrating?
On the 2nd.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
We're doing the 2nd. And Tom says we have to do it over and over and over and over again.
Okay. That's true, that's right.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that with everyone before we got into it and didn't realize what we had agreed to. So we will need to adjourn to executive session for purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the WEA because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And I believe I need a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session. Ms. Bullen, yeah, did you have a question?
Yeah, she dropped off for a second.
Okay. Ms. Bullen essay?
In fairness, you get, you get dropped, so we're voting.
Oh, sorry.
Voting to go, roll call vote to go into executive session.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon, I saw an aye. Mr. Brady? Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous and we've adjourned from public session at 6:44 PM to executive session. Thanks very much.